Record right now.
Alright.
Alright, so. Alright, you can fire on, sir.
Thank you. Can anybody hear me? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Just a quick correction. I know what was communicated was was four one seven, sales promotion and sales management. But I was, I'm not part of the that facilitates uh four one seven. Uh I thought was assigned to you. Of course, I teach. I facilitate for your level was four two four, which is business promotion. Which is what we're going to be talking about today. So from time to time, I will. Um, I will call on students to participate. So please, in case you have, you are thinking you are good to be able to just put it on and go. I advise you not to do that. Alright, so we'll start shortly. Or we'll start immediately. So this is both four to four business promotion. Um, the learning objectives for this study session, this study session one. Uh, after this study session, you should be able to explain the concept of promotion in marketing and provide some definitions of that concept. Um, you should be able to differentiate between cool and push strategy as related to promotional activities in marketing. You should be able to identify the elements of promotional methods. Uh, you should be able to discuss uh the economic and creative considerations for using those elements. Each of those elements and then you need to explain some legal and ethical considerations of communication and implementation of marketing communication. So. The first thing we need to ask ourselves, what is promotion? Also known as marketing communication, um is the collection of all the elements in an organization's marketing needs that facilitates exchanges by establishing shared meaning with the organization's customers or clients. Now, you can see that I've highlighted some words in green. And the reason why I've highlighted them in green is because these words or these uh these uh concepts are key to the definition of marketing promotion. Somebody is going on the screen. Please try not to go on the screen. Thank you. Alright, so the first of those um concepts that we will be looking at is the marketing needs. The organization's marketing needs are the elements within the organization's control that have been that have been manipulated to pursue marketing objectives. Some of these, there are many, you know, over the years, there's research has found more of these tools. But the most basic of the tools are what we call the four Ps. I'm sure you have heard of the four Ps before. Um, so the four Ps are products, price, promotion and place. Now, product is the actual offering that the business uh is offering to the customer. And the product, as you know, can either be a physical product or a service. So it can be used interchangeably for a physical product or a service. The price is the amount that the company is offering a product for. Uh, the promotion is how the company is telling people about the about the product and how the company is persuading them to buy this product. And then the place is of course the distribution channel, how the company gets the 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 product to the marketplace, to the customer. I'm sure we are all reasonably familiar with the four Ps. Alright, if anybody that has any questions can just send me a chat. So I'm sure we're all familiar with the four Ps. So the look of the marketing needs. Now, another issue is another concept that is key to the promotional, another concept that is key to the definition of business promotion is exchange. So the reason why we are carrying out business promotion is so that we can have an exchange, which is, you know, where you share your information about the product and you are rewarded by the sale of your product. So um, that's what that's the expansion for term exchange. Now, the last concept we'll be looking at in the definition of the business promotion is shared meaning. And what we mean by shared meaning is when the organization and customers objectives align. Now, when they are customer, when they are their objectives align, that means you as a business, you are trying to share, or they are trying to convince the the customer to buy and use your product. And then obviously, you're on the customer's side, the customer achieves satisfaction from the use of the product. So that's when when the customer, the the business is able to convince the customer to buy and then the customer is able to be satisfied by that purchase. Then we have shared meaning and that's a very important concept for repeat business. Because without repeat business, the business is likely to go out there. Go on that or on that. Now, there are many ways that a company can carry out marketing communication or business promotion. But the two basic ways is by using what we call push and cool strategy, marketing strategy. So we have the push marketing strategy and the cool marketing strategy. Now, we will now look at some of the things, what 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 good strategies and here. Now, the push strategy, the push promotional strategy makes use of companies' sales force using trade promotional activities. So what that means is that the the company, the business, tries to get customers to buy its product by pushing it, by having creating a very well structured distribution channel, motivated members who are, you know, willing to make sure that the product gets into the face of customers. Um, a very good example of a company that uses a push strategy is a company like Gala. Now, you know that one, you don't need to go and look for Gala. Whenever you need to visit Gala, just go out on the street, you know, see Gala. If you go to market, you see Gala. If it's your malam around the corner, he's also selling Gala, Gala. So the company is in a push strategy, they are making sure that the product is always in the face of the of the of the customer. So can anybody tell me another person who is using push? Can I get another? Anybody else is using push strategy? Can anybody volunteer? Any other company that is using push strategy? We part volunteer, how come you're not random? Alright. It's too long, la, la, too. Hello? It's too long, la, la, too. You there? You there? Are you unmute yourself? Hello? 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 Can we get it, you know, to unmute herself or she's not there? Christina, please, you are going on the screen. Hello? Hello? Okay. Okay, it's a new stage, can be unmuted, let me try and unmute that. Anyway, since we are having a problem with that, I don't think I can unmute. Doctor, are you unmute? Apparently, if you mute, I can unmute them. Anyway, let's go on. So I guess we've been able to cover, um, I think we all have an understanding of what a push promotional strategy looks like. And we also have an example of a company that uses it. I would have loved for, you know, people to be able to talk, but apparently it's not going to be easy to do that. Anyway. Um, so now let's look at the push strategy. The pull promotional strategy is one that requires high spending on advertising and consumer promotion to build up consumer demand for a product by using relatable scenarios that make customers relate, have requests for the product. So using a push strategy is a bit more complex than a push strategy. Because it's very technical, you have to create that ultimate scenario for your for your customer that makes the customer start to look for the product. For instance, a company that uses push strategy is a company like DSTV. Now, DSTV, although they have people, you have, you have people that they distribute to, but before you before you buy a DSTV decoder and dish, it's because you have heard, you have seen their advert and you have seen what they are offering and you are and you are wow, you are thinking, oh, I need this to be able to, you know, and to be able to relax in my house. I think this is what I need, you understand? So you can see that the content they have there, you see where they are promoting uh the FA Cup, you know, and other sporting, um, sporting activities. And because you are interested in those sporting activities, you go out to look for a DSTV decoder and a DSTV dish and you make sure that you install and then you make sure you pay your um your subscription every month so that you can continue to enjoy the service. So the DSTV company is using a push strategy to make their customers look for them rather than trying to push it. Now, um, some of the objectives of promotion, why do we carry out promotion at all? Promotion can be used to inform customers about your product. So in case you have a new product and you want people to know about it, you have to use promotion. The other objective of promotion is to persuade customers to buy the product. Because it's not just enough for you to tell people that I have this new product. You have to be able to persuade them, show them that, um, you know, they need the product or the product can be satisfactory to them. Another key objective of promotion is what we call image creation. You know, just as I explained about DSTV, you can create an image that makes the customer want to feel as if, oh, I, this is the image, the perfect image I want for myself. I can picture myself using this product and I think I need it. And that is a very important objective for everybody. Another objective of promotion is reassurance. Now, I don't know if many of you can remember, there was a time when they said Indomie was killing people. I don't know if, I wish, you know, we were able to discuss because I'll have really been nice. Um, I'm going to be a person. I'm mute for that. Learning from my people. Learning from my people. Anyway, so um, there was a time when Indomie was, um, when Indomie, there was a rumor going around that Indomie was killing people and, you know, Indomie had to do some quick marketing communications to reassure people, to let them know that, no, the product actually doesn't kill people. And what the way they went about that, they went and got um and got the endorsement from from medical practitioners to show that this product actually doesn't kill people. And then they started pushing it through children. Sorry, can I, can you, I hope you can hear me. Wow. Okay. Okay, so I can see a chat from, from, I mean, not so deep. Saying Indomie, yes, Indomie is also a good idea, is a good example of of push strategy. Please, you can chat me. Yes, I can see Funker, Fibo, Bonvita and Melo. Um, so please, chat me if you need to, if you have anything to say. Alright, so like I said, promotion can also be used to reassure customers where you have some bad habits. Right, so we also have to now look, as we have the marketing needs element, which are tools that we manipulated for your marketing, we also have promotional needs element. And we'll be discussing many of these elements over the period of the course. So we'll just look at them briefly today and then we'll start to take them one by one as we go along on this course. Um, so promotional needs elements are various tools that can be used to achieve promotional objectives. These are number one, advertising, personal selling, sales promotion, publicity and public relation. So we'll look at each of these promotional elements one by one right now. We're just going to hit the small detail and then hope that I, as possible, that I'll be able to touch on each of them. The first one is advertised, what is advertised? Again, you have seen that I've highlighted some keywords that will help you to understand the differences between promotional. Advertising is a paid form of non-personal communication initiated by an identified marketer to establish or continue exchange relationship with customers, with customers and at times with other people. Now, let's look at those keywords one by one. Um, paid advertising, if the communication is not paid for, it is not advertising. Because there's a lot of communication that the customer, that the business might make that they don't pay for. But advertise for it to be termed advertising, the communication has to be paid for. Now, the second keyword there is non-personal. And as you go ahead, you want to understand what we mean by personal and non-personal communication. But for now, non-personal communication is a form of communication where the two who are being handling communication are not the same, they are not talking with each other directly. So it's non-personal, I'm sure many of us have seen advertisements, advertisements are on TV. Um, they are on billboards, they are on radio, they are just general information. It's not, none of them is talking directly to any one single person. So when you give a communication that is not intended for any single person, any specific person, but is general, the information is general, that kind of communication is what we call non-personal communication. And now, the third key term there is identify. So the person for something, for any communication to be termed as advertising, the source must be known, you must be able to identify who is in charge of that communication. Because you will never see, I'm sure you will not see M T N advertising or enter. That would be an aberration. But anytime you see an M T N advert, you will see the M T N brand there that will let you know that the person who is passing across this communication is M T N, is an identified marketer. Uh, the fourth key term there is exchange relationship. You know, we have already talked about exchange and what it means. So basically, the advertising must 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 develop exchange relationships where, you know, you pass across the message and then you are rewarded with a sale. And the last term there is stakeholders. Because advertising is not only for customers, it's also for stakeholders. Uh, so what we mean by stakeholders? Stakeholder is if anybody that may have anything to do with that product. For instance, a stakeholder could be government. So that when you are advertising your product, you are also communicating to the government that this thing is out there and you are making sure, later on during this study session, we'll look at legal and ethical considerations for for promotion. So by then, you will understand better why advertising is concerned with stakeholders. Because there are many things, there are many people that that receive advertising, they are not meant to buy it, but they are meant to just detect the comments along the way. Please, if you can't hear me at any point in time, just send me a chat. Alright, now the second promotional needs item element that we'll be looking at is personal selling. Now, personal selling is used when the seller intends to develop relationship with customers and making of communication and negotiations to close the sale of a product or service that is complex and cannot sell on its own off the shelves in the marketplace. Yes, what we mean by complex? Now, there are some products that you can't just stick to the supermarket and sell. Uh, because they are specific in nature, they are used in specific in nature, it's not for everybody, it's probably for a targeted market. As well to give you an example, send me by chat examples of um of complex products. So what do you think do you want next products? I'll give about a minute for people to send me an example. Give me examples of what you think a complex product is, so that we can discuss it. I'll give a minute for that. Or well, about thirty seconds, because we don't have a lot of time. I'll give about thirty seconds, please send me what you think a complex product is. I need everybody to send, send something so that I know that you are communicating and you are understanding. Yes, yes, I'm getting some um some answers here. Yeah, I've seen one, gold, somebody said gold, gold, yes, gold is a complex product. You can't just put gold in um in your supermarket and think that you are going to sell it. So gold needs a bit of personal touch, you know, talking, going around to the supermarket. Um. I'm seeing here lady care or sanitary, well known, is that lady care, sanitary tools are not, you can get that in the supermarket. These are not complex products. When you talk about a complex product, there are things that you can get in the supermarket that you can't get in the supermarket. So I'm seeing heavy equipment here, thank you, Galaxy eight one. Um, heavy equipment, yes. You can't just, you can't, the manufacturers of heavy equipment won't just put it in the supermarket. They have to know, they have to target their market and know how to go there and talk to them and let them know that they have his equipment for sale. Uh, yeah, we see, you said Mercedes Benz, Mercedes Benz, yes, to a large extent, we do personal selling. Uh, but that's for more, they are more high models. Insurance, yes, Moliti, Munias, that's very correct, insurance, it requires personal selling. Not everybody's here to go and buy insurance. Especially in the country like Nigeria where you have, um, you have a low level of acceptance for insurance. I can see medicine products, yes, some medicine products or some medical products, not necessarily drugs, but some medical machines like X-ray, somebody said X-ray, yes, like X-ray. You know, anybody in company, any company that is manufacturing X-ray will have to go to hospitals and tell them, we have the X-ray, so they can't just sit down and be putting in and back on. Somebody will answer them. So I think we have a fair idea now of what complex products are. Um, so we'll stop there and continue the lecture. So the next element is sales promotion. And sales promotion is a direct improvement that offers an extra value or incentive for a product to be traded when it's a to the main, the customers or or consumers with the objective of creating an immediate sale. Now, before we go further, let's look at the keywords. Sales promotion gives you extra value or incentive, which means that ordinarily, if you were able to buy, um, let's say a bottle of Coke, you would ordinarily have bought it for hundred naira and you'll drink it and the content they have sold to you is the content for a hundred naira. But when the company is doing a sales promotion, you, you, I'm sure many of you have gone to the supermarket and you see them saying, okay, if you buy three bottles of Coke, you can get it at a discount. Or if you buy three bottles of Coke, it can give you one, a gift, you know, and those are, that's extra value or incentive for you to buy a product. Now, the other keyword there is get sale. So what we mean by immediate sale is that for a sales promotion to be effective, the customer is supposed to buy it there and then. It's not something that you will say, oh, maybe they'll buy it later or I've heard. Because the key thing about a sales promotion that is usually short term, it doesn't happen for a long time. So they are saying buy it now or within, by the end of this month, you can't get it anymore. So you have to buy it now, right now, or you may lose the opportunity. So, um, and there are different kinds of sales promotion. We have the sales promotion that is targeted towards the consumer, which is the ones you see in the supermarkets where they are saying buy one, get one free. That's the consumer oriented um sales promotion. There will also have trade oriented sales promotion, which is common within, who is targeted towards distributors of the product. So the company who is producing, my look, okay, because you want to be able to sell quickly, um, he may choose to say, okay, give you as the distributor, if you can pick up fifty pieces of this product at once and can give you an extra cent. So that kind of promotion, we don't get to hear about it, we, the consumers don't get to hear about it. But it happens a lot from the producer to the distributor. Or you could also say, okay, take this fifty pieces, take it free of charge. When you finish selling it, bring it back, come and pay me after. So that's also a a sales promotion to the distributor because it will enable the distributor to pick up more pieces than ordinarily I picked up. Uh, the last type of sales promotion is business oriented sales promotion. Uh, business oriented sales promotion are geared, are targeted towards from businesses to businesses. So there's something called business to business marketing. So it is for businesses that their products are being consumed by other businesses. Like for instance, um, I can see here that somebody says sale of aircraft, sale of aircraft, yes, was, and it's presented for complex product. But, you know, sale of aircraft, the the company producing aircraft is also producing for a business. So they may tell the business, okay, do you know what? Instead of buying one airplane, buy, take two, whilst are you sitting, and they pay us later. Okay, somebody's asking a question that, can we get an example of trade promotion? Yeah, I just gave you one, okay, like for instance, um, there is something that I, there was a time when I was involved uh in some, in some, Galaxy eight one said black bike, yes, that's uh an example of a sales promotion. Anyway, what I was saying was, there was a time when I was involved in some consulting for fan meal and we were trying to to get some of their products, they're not pushing their product, more of their product to the market. The only purpose is to make some quick sales. And so we advised them at that time that they could, instead of trying to reduce, ice cream is cheap already, so it's difficult for you to really really have any customer oriented sales promotion for ice cream. But you can use your trade channels to say, you know, okay, as a increase margin that you will give to your distributor. So your distributor, maybe you were making the margin of ten naira before, and I say, okay, for the next two months, you can give you a margin of fifteen naira, but you have to, you have to buy about, usually you have bought fifty pieces, five hundred pieces, I will give you a margin of hundred or fifteen naira. So that will only last for two months because you cannot continue. So that will only last for two months because you cannot continue to sell at that margin. But you will just create it so that the person can, can, um, so that they can achieve quick sales during that short period. Uh, who cares, you are asking about Valentine, Valentine sales slash. Uh, yes, Valentine sales slash is also, um, an example of a sales promotion. Now, it depends on who, the, who they are slicing it for. If, uh, uh, the company selling, the company selling chocolates, for instance, might decide to do a Valentine's sales slash and say, okay, this is a Valentine's sales slash, I will use the amount of my chocolate volume as buy bulk. So who do you think, um, that is directed towards? I need answers, somebody should answer me. When the producer of chocolate says, I'm doing Valentine's sale, so if you buy bulk of my chocolates because you are going to push it towards, you are going to distribute it into ampers. If you buy bulk of my chocolate, I will give you a good discount and it's targeting it towards who are going to make ampers. You understand? So that is like a business oriented, um, sales promotion because they are targeting that towards other businesses. Like other small entrepreneurs who will buy that book, that chocolate in bulk and then now put it in pieces inside ampers or sell. So that's a business oriented sales promotion. I hope you understand. Anybody that has any questions, please feel free to send them to me via chat. Alright, so let's move on. Now, the next element we are looking at is publicity. Now, publicity is the communication of a product, brand or business. You know, by placing advertising and information about it in the media without paying for the time or media space directly. You know, when we, when we spoke about advertising, we said advertising is not the thing. So it is, there's a regular time slot when you are watching your program, after every fifteen minutes, you will go for another break. And then, you know, you, that's, that slot has been scheduled for advertising. And the person who is advertising during that period is paying for it and you can tell who the person is. But in publicity, they don't pay for it. Now, I'm sure many of you will be asking, how do you now get started, you don't pay for it? It's very easy. All you need to do is, uh, to have somebody talk about them. So somebody who has used the product, what they may do is they may give the product to somebody, you know, I'm sure we've all heard of social media influencers. So they might just calling me, maybe a, a social media influencer and say, you know what, take my product, go and use it. And the few media influencers will use it and will just talk about it on their page. And, you know, so they didn't pay the guy, they just told him, go and use it. And in using it, he also experienced the product and probably satisfied some needs that he had. We'll talk about, you understand? So the time or the media space is not paid for di- directly when you are talking about publicity. It's usually an exchange for, of goods or services. So, you know, apart from, um, from, um, uh, advertisement, apart from social media, um, social media influencers. And somebody else told me another way that you can create publicity for your product. So a way that you can get your products out there without paying for it, can anybody come up with any idea? Let's give thirty seconds for that. We just think about it, how do you think you can, um, publicize your product without paying for advertising? Apart from using social media influencers, what other ways do you think you can publicize your product? Yes, Galaxy one, I'm seeing you referals. Uh, well, yes, you can, you can get, yes, you can get the referrals from people that have used it. Uh, in K T blessing, I'm seeing you, you can print t-shirts, that's a fantastic one. So you can go up and down with the t-shirts that is printed with your, your product and people are, people are, people are saying, I am not paying them for it. So it also gives, yes, uh, lesson, don't guess, I can say complimentary freebies, yes, that's another way. You can, um, you can use, uh, you can give out freebies, people and those who will in turn do what a mouth for your product. Yeah, thank you all, yeah, face to face talk, well, face to face talk is not publicity. Because the thing about publicity is that it's also non-personal, perhaps you should have added that. Publicity is non-personal. Yes, I can see Damian on a corporate social responsibility, yes, that's a fantastic, um, uh, a fantastic example. When you use corporate, some companies who do corporate social, like for instance, I'm sure many of you have seen, um, those things that are, that have company logos on it. Yeah, so the companies will contribute the dustbin and then they will print their logo on it. And when you see their logo, you know that, okay, this company, um, did this and it's in a way about getting the brand out there. Yes, customized, the one I just said is customized souvenir, I agree with you, so you can print, jot out and just share it for people. And by that, that, that way people are going to buy your product, I am not paying them any extra for it. Um, Galaxy fifty one says celebrity endorsement, celebrity endorsement is usually paid for. It's another, it's another element which we will talk about later on, although we didn't mention it now, but we will talk about it, usually paid for. Uh, Facebook posts is paid for, uh, Molyte, Facebook posts is usually paid for. Uh, Badmuse says some social media influencers pay, yes, it is true, social media, but you will know that that person is coming to do an advance. And the social media, um, influencer will collect his money from that person and will treat it as an advance. It's different when you treat it as an advance than when the social media, um, influencer is just talking and he's just saying, oh, this product, I use it, it's nice, blah, blah, blah. But you can usually tell the difference between a paid advance and when the person just, um, used the product and liked. Yes, Galaxy wanted to opinion on that, yes, well, opinion on that are the same, are sort of the same as social media, uh, influencers. So let's move on, let's move on, uh, because the time is passing. But I hope everybody understands, uh, the difference between advertising and publicity. It is about whether it is paid, advertising is usually paid and scheduled, the time is there, from the day you pay, they will tell you the day, the date, the date and the time that they are going to show your address. You understand? So that is usually, um, for advertising, but for publicity, it's, it's more generic, it can just happen at any time. You know, so like for instance, where you do the concert t-shirt and you wear it throughout the day. You can't, you can't, you don't know who you are going to meet, so you can't, you can't schedule it. But by moving about throughout the day, you are able to get good to know about your product. Alright, so let's move on. So, uh, the, another element that we will be looking at is public relations. Now, public relations and publicity are usually mistaken, um, mistaken for each other. People will usually think public relations is the same thing as publicity, but they are two different things. Public relations is the deliberate, planned and sustained effort to establish and maintain mutual understanding between an organization and its publics. Yeah, now let's take, let's take the, the keywords so that we can understand better what public, public relations is. Now, public relations is deliberate, which means that it's deliberate and planned, which means that you had, it's already something that you had. You proposed it went out of, you proposed it went out of, uh, your way to get this thing done. So it's deliberate and it's planned and then it's sustained, which means that it's not a one-off. It happens over, you continue to do it, you don't stop doing public relations. Public relations goes on. Um, sorry, there's a question here from, um, someone, someone said, would you ask to influence him? Does a paid sponsorship impact how customers perceive the product? No, not at all, not at all, whether, whether it's paid or not, I mean, I don't think any of us have, has ever, um, we've seen empty t-shirts, we've seen the adverts. It doesn't, it doesn't affect that, you know, we will go and buy their products. You understand? It's, I don't think it's, it doesn't really have an influence, but as you go on, you will see, you know, how, why, we will soon discuss, you know, how to determine which one to use, whether it's advertising, you need to use or publicity. We will soon, we will soon discuss that, so just hold on to it. Um, yes, uh, somebody is saying, can you please define public relations again? Yeah, public relations is still on the screen, it's a deliberate plan and sustained effort to establish and maintain mutual understanding between an organization and its public. So, um, like I said, it is deliberate and planned, so you must have known, you know that you are going to do it and then it's sustained. So the continuous effort, you don't stop it, there is no time to stop. And then what you are trying to achieve with public relations is mutual understanding. So that you are always, where public relations is different from publicity is that publicity is just about getting the name of the book, of the, of the product or the business. It's just about getting a name out there. It doesn't care if it's good publicity or bad publicity. Publicity is just about getting a name out there. Now, public relations is about making sure that what is out there is not, you know, robbing the customers or the publics in the wrong way. And that's why we have to determine publics here, because public relations is not just about you making your customer like you. It's also about getting along with the government, making sure that in doing your business, the government is not disturbing you. Uh, you have other stakeholders, the owners of the business, to make sure that the owners of the business are happy, to make sure that, um, the, the, the staff in the business, the staff in the business are happy, because if your staff are not happy, you know, it would tell, your, your, your customers will not be meeting. I'm sure many of us have gone to businesses and the staff are, are very rude. The staff are rude because the company is not carrying out proper public relations. So public relations, you know, is, is, is from, as you can see from the diagram, uh, the, the graphic on the slide, is, 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 is about putting to everybody. Everybody and making sure that everybody is having a good, um, a good, uh, impression of your business or your product. Alright, so, um, by the time, over the course of the period, of, of, of this course, we will go deeper into public relations and publicity and we'll be able to, you know, properly identify the differences between the two. But if there is one, that one key difference that you will take away is that public relations is sustained and publicity is usually just one-off. That's the very key difference between the two. Alright, so, um, let's move on. Now, we've looked at all the elements, there are still more elements, but we look at some of the key ones that are more common, you know, especially in Nigeria. So now, once you have all these elements, you have to, you know, strike a balance because you are going to use all of them. There is no business that can just use more than I think you do ask. You have to use all of them, but each and everyone comes to low cost. None of them is free, you understand? So you have to balance it and know that, okay, if I do more advertising here, I do more publicity here, publicity is usually cheaper than advertising. Because publicity is supposed to be free, although yes, you might do some, you know, exchange in kind, but it's usually supposed to be free of cost. So you may be able to, you need to balance the use of all these elements and to balance it, you have to have it's a marketing communication plan. Which is one that is all the promotional tools at optimum ratio. So that word optimum is very, very important, optimum ratio to achieve the highest amount of, of newest product. We know that there's no business that has, uh, limited ratios. Everybody has captured, yes, when, when it puts, uh, just, and those are the other ones you don't understand. But again, you know, the thing that you are, you are the one who. The highest exposure, let's get the word out there while trying to, uh, you are putting, uh, happening. After now, there are many things that you will look at, there are factors that you will look at when you are forming your marketing communications plan. The first one is the nature of the product. The nature of the product is very, very key in determining your marketing, uh, your marketing communications plan. Because if your product, you know, we, we look at shampoo strategies and we look at, okay, that's a product that will work where we push strategies, some products will work where we push that. Now, if your product is such that you have to use push strategy, then you know that your marketing communication should take the form of probably sales promotion, uh, sales promotion, publicity and things like that. You may not necessarily have to spend too much money on advertising maybe, so, well, no, you probably do a lot of advertising in that. Whether you are doing pool, then you know that you're, you're, you're spending more on advertising and probably less on publicity. Sales promotion, in fact, in some cases, like somebody said aircraft earlier on when we were trying to talk about complex products. Once you have, even a, a many people, I'm sure many of us have never seen a Boeing ad, 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 Boeing is the company that makes airplanes. Is one of the companies that makes airplanes. I'm sure we never, many of us have never seen the address, why? Because you are not target market, they don't care about you, you know, they know the people that they are going to go and meet. So the nature of their product will determine what they are spending more money on. So they will, they will probably spend more money on personal selling, you understand? Rather than advertising, you will probably spend more money on personal selling and publicity rather than advertising. Because the nature of their product is one that requires a pool strategy. Now, um, the second, um, factor that may affect your, your marketing communication plan is the nature of the customer. Now, if your customer, remember that when we were talking about sales promotion, uh, we talked about trade promotion and business product promotion, uh, business oriented sales promotion. Now, if your, your customer is ultimately another business, then you are probably better off, you know, spending your money in trade fairs, in advertising, in trade fairs and in, um, public events than you are, you know, doing, uh, general advertising, advertising. Because of the nature of your customer. So also, if we take the, the example of the airplane, um, the airplane producers, the nature of their customer, they are dealing with airlines and maybe some of the more wealthy people in the world who are, you know, who can afford private jets. So the nature of their customer means that the kind of marketing communication that they will have to complete, they will be spending more on, um, personal marketing as, as people. Now, another factor is, uh, the nature of the market. What do you mean by the nature of the market? Um, if, if, if you are selling a product and there's a lot of competition in your market, in your, in the market you are in. For instance, um, if you look at the telecoms, the telecommunications industry, there's a lot of competition. There are only four players and the four of them are highly competitive. So what that means is that they are all spending more money on advertising because they need to be coming up with new, new things and they are sending, spending more money on sales promotion because they need to come up with different new, you know, um, different new products, different new offers and all that. Because they are in a competitive market. But imagine if you were in the kind of market where you don't have any competition. Then, you know, you would do more personal selling and more of publicity, just to get your name out there. You let people know that, okay, yes, I do this thing, that's when your market is not competitive. Can somebody give me an example of a product in a non-competitive market? Apart from airplanes, because we mentioned airplanes too much. I'll give thirty seconds for that. An example of, um, of a, 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 a non-competitive market or a, a market with low competition. With low competition. Cement, yes, thank you, Elijah. Cement is that, you know, there are only how many brands and the differences between them are not much. So if you go to the market and you want to buy cement, you'll probably just go with the person that has the lowest price. You understand? The differences is that are not too much different. So cement is a good place, well, is a good, uh, example of a, a, a market with low competition. Anybody else? South, well, let's think about it, South. South, there's, uh, there's, there are different, you know, because there are, there are so many different, different types of South. So you need to be very, very, I think there's a lot of competition in South. Gary, thank you, Shabu Faradi, Gary, there is no competition for Gary, Gary doesn't really get advanced as he talks. So anytime, anytime, any boy I meet Gary, he's sure that he will sell his guy. Gary doesn't, there's nobody competing with him. Yeah, this Amola, refinery, yes, refinery is a good, is a good example. Gary doesn't, there's nobody's competition with him. Yeah, this Amola refinery, yes. Refinery is a good, is a good example. They have no competition. Um, Aginia, he says Saint Louis sugar. Saint Louis sugar is before before. Now, there's competition in sugar. There are, there are many to enter the, the, the market now. Before, it used to be, you know, very low competi- competition. But now, there's a lot of competition. Um, Molly, uh, Molly Key says Granada soil. How bad? There's competition in Granada now. There's competition in Granada. You will see a lot of advance of Granada soil because there are different brands and they are competing. Which one is silky cola food for women? Full care favor. We don't know what silky cola food is though. No, there are different brands of sauce. Galaxy fifty one, there are different brands of sauce. Fire distribution company, yes. There's no competition there because there's only one that will serve your area anyway. Cooking gas, you know, there are different, there are competition, there's competition, that one is competitive now. Yes, it's the person that is importing the cooking, cooking gas that may not have problem. But the distributors are experiencing a lot of com- competition. Alright, so let's stop there. Let's move on because the time is passing. We are flagging this. So, um, the last factor that would affect your, your marketing communication plan is availability of funds. Because at the end of the day, if you only have fifty thousand yuan, you can't be thinking of advertising. You can't be, you understand? You will probably be thinking along the lines of sales promotion. Because the money you have cannot pay for free label advertising. Or you will not be thinking of television advertising, maybe thinking of social media advertising because that's what your pockets can afford. Alright, let's move on. So now we are looking at the legal and ethical issues in communication. Now, you know that sometimes customers, I mean marketers, where they are rush, where they are rushing to, to sell, to get their products out. They may make all kinds of claims. Some of them will be spurious, they will be fake, they will be false, you know, and all these have. You know, ethical problems. They have, they have ethical, uh, what do you know, consequences. So they can get them into trouble. You understand? So they, what has, has happened in marketing is that they, they were able to build a framework to help people to ma- make sure that they. They, they, they don't cross ethical or legal line. And some of these tools that I used to regulate is number one, full disclosure. So full disclosure means that if you are selling a, a product, for instance, and you know that that product. Anybody that has maybe diabetes, for instance, once you use that product, the person will have high blood pressure. You have to state it there that this product, those is not good for diabetes patients. I'm sure in some, when you bought some medication, you seen that not for use by pregnant women. So that's what they are doing there. They are giving you full disclosure that if you are a pregnant woman, you don't use this product. It's not good for pregnant women. So also, you know, there may be side effects that come with the use of your product. You have to state everything. That's the, the principle of full disclosure. You have to tell all the side effects, even though it's going to affect your sales. You, you are expected to tell all the side effects. Or all the, all the consequences of use of the product. Number two, um, on the framework is substantiation. Now, what that means is that if you, you cannot go out and say, you know, you are, you say many fake um drugs. Where more you say, oh, I have a cure for Covid. And, um. Sorry, Galaxy eighty four, you say what about regulation? I don't understand by regulation. Can you please explain for that? Now, what I was saying about substantiation is that if you say that your product can cure headache, it must be able to cure headache. You can't come out and give us a product that will cure half headache and then you are then saying, my product, my, my product cures headache. You have to give us the, you know, you have to substantiate. What, what you are saying has to be substantiated. It has to be true. So you have to validate what you are saying, that it is valid, it is correct information that you are passing at all. If you are not able to substantiate your claim, then your product may be withdrawn from the market by the drug company. The third one is disease and disease order, which does mean that if you are not able to give full, full disclosure. And are not able to substantiate, the government can issue a cease and desist order and pull your product away from the market. So they can just tell you, don't, we don't want to see your product in the market. And if they see, you know, you could get into a lot of trouble. It could end up, you know, uh, having to pay a lot of money. The fourth step is corrective advertising. So where you are not able to fully disclose or substantiate, you are supposed to issue another advertisement. Say, that first advert, advert that I did do, where I said my drug will cure headache. My drug cannot cure headache. It can only cure food. I don't even understand. So you have to give corrective advertising. So that's just to correct the earlier impression that I said. When once you are not, once you are found not to be able to give, or not to have given full disclosure, or not to be able to substantiate. Your, um, claims about your product. And then the last uh tool that is used to regulate are fines, which is just creative measures. So it may be monetary and they will give myself, okay, pay a certain amount. I don't know if some of us can remember, um, wow, this, um, wow, that is fast food. If you can remember this uh issue with uh codeine and uh emzo. And where emzo was fined, you know, some certain amount of money because they were simply giving codeine. Um, to be, to be allowing codeine to be, to be sold indiscriminately. So there are fines, fines are creative measures. Alright, so that we've come to the end of the study session. I hope you have all been able to, um, learn a little something. And I guess we'll see you, um, next time. Please, if you have any questions, is, the, um. Meeting is still open, so you can send them and I'll quickly answer them as quickly as I can. Thank you very much for listening today and, um, see you guys sometime. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, uh, lads. I caught you ask seed crops. Are there examples of non-competitive markets? Um, yes, okay. Uh, yes, it's, it's not, it's telling, not, usually, you can only get them from specialized. Uh, institutions. Um, yes, the material, um, will be on the, I will, I've just recorded this session. And I will also add this, the recording as well as the, the PowerPoint to the, um. To the, to the element. You, you can pick it up from there from Monday. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, so we've come to the end of the class. Any questions? If you have a question, please ask now. Yes, um, can you talk about I just said? The differentiation of, I just, I just said a day ago is an example of. Of publicity, not public relations. It's more publicity. You understand? They are, they are doing it, so they are, what they are doing is they are defining it, so they, they are, they are spending that money on another need. But at the end of the day, you are talking about it now. You understand? Because you saw it. Although they, they didn't advertise, they didn't, there was no scheduled time or whatever. They didn't advertise. All they did was, they did some CSR. And people like you and I saw it and we are talking about it now. So it's public, it's publicity, not public relation. And the fact that they do yearly, the fact that they do yearly, you know, is, uh. It is just a public, a public stunt, you know, it's a publicity stunt. Yeah, somebody asked about DJ services. I don't understand what you mean by DJ services. Thank you, Fokker. Aginia, you mentioned DJ services. What do you mean by DJ services? You just said what about DJ services? Oh, well, it seems to have gone. Alright, so we need to round up. Um, thank you, everybody. I really enjoyed this, uh, this session. Okay, you said, Aginia said, like the service we render. I don't know what you are saying that in respect to. I don't know why you are saying this in respect to. Aginia, I don't know what you are saying. The next factor after full disclosure for, as for lads is, um, substantiation. You have to sub, you have to validate what you claim. What you claim, um, must be true. Okay, is it not a part of advertising, DJ services? No, DJ service, well, I don't understand, I don't understand the question, honestly. That's Aginia. I don't understand the question. Is advertising the? Okay, you mean when they, when they do road shows? Road shows is, um, part of, um. A road show is, is a part of advertising. We will discuss it over the course of the period, of the, of the, of the course. It's something that we will still discuss. It's something we will still discuss. I would have gone to me road shows, when they hire DJs to play on the road or, I don't understand. If you can, they must be. Anyway, we have to wrap this up because, um, somebody else has to use the link. Other class has to use the link, I think. So let's end this, okay? Alright, goodbye, everybody.